Everybody's attention please, call the order. Start off the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adequate notice for this meeting was advertised on Esri Park Press and the Beacon on January 11th, 2024, and by posting the notice in the Forkett River and Lenoka Harbor Post Office and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township Clerk as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call please.
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Armato?
Here.
Mr. Conady? Absent. Mrs. Walker? Also absent. Mr. Armato?
Here.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
And Mr. Peters?
Present.
We have a quorum. Are we doing this district hold first?
Right here. Okay, want to save it?
Yeah.
All right, we'll save it.
Save it.
Okay, go into executive session.
Be it resolved in executive session, be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential student matters, including but not limited to harassment, intimidation, and bullying; confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload; confidential personnel matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the executive session is estimated to be approximately sixty minutes, after which the Board shall reconvene and proceed with business at 7:00 PM. Action may be taken. Motion?
Motion Peters?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'd just like to announce, we're going to do board goals next meeting. It's supposed to be 2324, not 2223. Okay?
Good.
Are we good with that? Are we good with that, Sal?
Yeah.
Got a big agenda tonight. All right, thank you. Oh, there's some public out there asking that when we post the meetings, let them know that the meeting starts at six, but public session starts at seven. That other districts do that. Okay, welcome folks. We're continuing back, we're meeting, we just came out of private session. Just so everyone knows, that this meeting is following the budget and the agenda that was handed out. It's announced in the paper and the local post office that Friday's meeting will be regarding the budget. But, that being said, we'll adopt the budget. But, the meeting is at four o'clock, for the reason of, we have high school graduation on Thursday. If we got rained out on Thursday, we would still have time. We pushed to four o'clock so we could finish the meeting at four o'clock, go to high school graduation at six o'clock. Clear? Good? So any of you here that would like to discuss the budget, you're probably better off... Sir? Sir? Don't we have to pass the budget by a certain date?
Yeah. Yes, but there's people on this.
Unfortunately, sir, I'm so sorry for that, but that's what we had it set up. We can't, it's already been advertised, we're not going to change it, we're already set at that. Well, I'm sorry, we're following...
We can't get into shouting back and forth from the crowd? I mean, we have an agenda and that's what we have to proceed with today.
Okay.
There's public comment later on in the agenda that you can... Sorry, okay, just for the sake of the public, there is a public comment portion of this meeting where you could speak on any topic you wish, but the budget adoption is for Friday.
Thank you, sir, have a good day. Thank you, have a good day. All right, so, that being said, you're good.
Good?
Yep.
Okay, I just want to welcome you to our June board meeting. Here we are at the end of the school year. It did go quite fast. Three more days of school, and Wednesday is our middle school promotion, and Thursday is our high school graduation, assuming we don't get any of that bad stuff, which I'm not even going to say out loud. But, when we get to this point of the school year is when I do like to talk about milestones, and we've had quite a few. So as I already mentioned, it'll be our forty-third annual Lacy Township High School commencement ceremony that'll take place on the football field at six o'clock. On Wednesday, our eighth graders will be promoted to high school, also on the football field. On May 24th, thirty of our seniors earn their associate's degree and will complete the college academy program and receive their alumnus. And the best news about that is that since the inception of the Lacy Township High School Ocean County College Academy, the district has graduated a hundred and sixty-one seniors in the program, which is just beyond fantastic. At scholarship night, our students were awarded over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is a record for our district. And in addition to that, two seniors, Brody Sager and Constantine Calabrese, were awarded full scholarships and appointments to the Coast Guard Academy. So congratulations to the both of them. And Matthew Gautier was awarded a full scholarship and appointment to the Merchant Marine Academy, which, round of applause to him and his family. And so I just have to say that that indeed, again, is a record for our district and a fine exemplar of student academic achievement. We're really, really proud of them. We had amazing fall and spring drama presentations and outstanding concerts across all of our grades. Athletics and co-curriculars had a great, great year, and so much more in between. So I know a lot of our teachers in the audience, so kudos to our teachers, our administrators, our Board of Education for an outstanding school year. And finally, as a follow-up to my announcement on Friday, I'm not even going to get into it because I'm going to get emotional, I announced my retirement effective September 1. I was going to say a whole lot more, but I'm not. So, moving on, I do want to say though, thank you to everyone, to this Board of Education, to admin. It's been an honor to be here for twenty years. So, that's it on that. Okay, so I am now going to turn it over to Mr. King, because I am going to circle back around to our scholarship night, and I'd like to invite Mr. King up to the podium to make an additional presentation that was not made on scholarship night. Mr. King, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Dr. Brer. And we would first congratulate you on your retirement.
Don't make me cry.
Yes, I will, I will, I promise. Just to reiterate what was said, almost three hundred and fifty thousand dollars was generously donated by the community members, single families, individuals, groups to our district for outgoing seniors. That is just incredible outpouring of love, commitment, support for our school. It kind of demonstrates what this district is all about. In the, yes, sincerely, I agree. It was a wonderful night. In the energy of the evening, I made a error where I neglected to announce one scholarship, so I'm here this evening to rectify that. The Lacy Township High School Performing Arts Boosters Association Scholarship was not announced that evening. They're giving out seven scholarships for two hundred and fifty dollars each. If any of the students are here this evening, please come forward when your name is called. They've already received their scholarship, but I want to recognize them. We have Lily Brookman, Jack Rabel, Carolyn Lehman, Autumn Magnin, Morris Satello, Avery Whalen, and Kaylee Zarella. So all those students did receive that award. Again, a lot of proud moments that evening, along with our three students going to service academies, but the amount of care that went across that stage that evening, it's going to really change lives, was something to watch. And I'm always moved by it. I read the names, I read the amounts, but when you pause and step back and you see the totality of it, and you see how it's going to impact their lives going forward, and a lot of the donations are from former students of Lacy. So they go out, do great things, come back, give more so more people can do great things. It's a really nice, nice event. So, thank you, Dr. Brer, for allowing me to do that.
Thank you, and another round of applause for those students. All right, so now we turn our attention to our next presentation, and I alluded to our amazing staff. We typically do this in May, but our May agenda was full, and we decided how appropriate to end the school year with our presentations of our 2024-2025 Teachers of the Year. And I say this every month when we recognize our staff members of the month, is that behind every successful student is an amazing teacher who helped get him or her there. I like to use a quote every year, because I always say that outstanding teaching is an art, and in the words of Albert Einstein, "It is the supreme art of a teacher to awaken the joy in creative knowledge and expression." And our teachers are nothing short of amazing, and it is an honor to have Mr. King kick off our Lacy Township High School Teacher of the Year.
Thank you, Dr. Brer. It is a great pleasure of mine to start off this amazing, amazing event. The staff members you see up on the screen this evening are well-deserved and support. We're each going to speak on their behalf. I am proud and proud and honored to introduce Mrs. Michelle Artali as the High School. It is. She is, she is here with many family and friends, so a round of applause for all of them as well. So, what to say about Mrs. Artali? Now, it comes down to involvement, student engagement, and the impact she's had on lives. She has been here more than one year, that's all I'm going to say about it, it's been more than one year, and the thousands of students that she's impacted over her career are better for it. She's seen thousands of people come and go, including staff members come and go, administration come and go. Her key quality is that each person gets their moment. Each person gets their time with her. Each person gets what they need to make themselves a better person. And I don't care if it's a student in their class, a student she sees in the hallway, a staff member in need, a newer staff member, a veteran staff member, or even myself as administration, she gives you the time of her day and the time of her heart to let you know that she's there for you. And with the students, that comes through loud and clear. It doesn't matter whatever I ask her to do, as far as teaching assignments, coverages, the answer's always yes. And when she says yes, she means it. She's going to go do that job. She's not going to just show up. She's not going to just be there for a while. She will be there till the job is done, and she'll make sure every student that she's with gets what they need. And it's a very, very special person to do that. And when it came time to pick our staff member of the year, our teacher of the year, it's a hard decision, it truly is. A lot of great names come across the group, and we vote on them, we pick the top three, and we send the top three to the board, and when it came back, I was proud. I was proud that Mrs. Artali is going to get the recognition that she deserves, that she's earned, and that we are happy, happy to give to her. Your students are blessed to have you, we are lucky to have you with us, we thank you every day for all you do, and understand that you're making a difference. The High School Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Michelle Artali.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
With that, I turn the microphone over to Mr. Greg Brandis, Principal of Lacy Township High School.
Mr. King is a tough act to follow, and so is Mrs. Artali, so congratulations, congratulations to all the recipients from scholarship night, to all the recipients for the Teachers of the Year, and congratulations, Dr. Upperair, on your retirement. To celebrate the Middle School Teacher of the Year, I would like to invite down Ms. Stacy Knoxen, please join us now. Stacy is, Ms. Knoxen, Stacy Knoxen is joined by her parents here tonight, Nancy and Larry, and her two sons, Trevor and Travis. So congratulations to you on your daughter becoming Teacher of the Year. Ms. Knoxen, believe it or not, I have not even known Ms. Knoxen for a year now. She's one of the sixth grade teachers who joined the middle school in the Mill Pond merger, and as I did a year ago, talking to administrators and teachers about, all the teachers that were coming up to the middle school, I'm like, you know, how is Ms. Knoxen? What is she about, what are some of her qualities? And they were just like, she's awesome. Yeah, she's amazing. And I didn't really know what that meant until I met her this year, and over the summer, when I first told her that she wasn't going to be teaching the courses that I told her she was going to be teaching in the beginning of the summer, and she's been more than flexible in her scheduling and her students, and just this year, I alternated her assignment as well, she's been more than flexible. But most imploringly is she's caring for her special education students. She takes the time to work with them, she works hard with them, and is really always there for them, and it is her best quality is, I'm able to call her a caring educator, which is a great quality find in Ms. Knoxen. In addition to that, she's always the first one to jump in and lend a hand. We were looking for teachers for our first event of the school year, for the Harlem Globetrotters event, and I said, well, who's doing it? Why don't we try to get some sixth graders involved, sixth grade teachers involved? And they said, well, Ms. Knoxen's the only one that signed up already. So she was there, and she actually, I think, stole the show during the event. So she was also part of the Spirit Committee in Mill Pond, and been teaching over twenty years. So, and she throws the best end of the year parties. So congratulations to Ms. Knoxen as being Teacher of the Year. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Holly Namick, Principal of Cedar Creek.
Good evening, everybody. Congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year. I have the distinct pleasure of recognizing the Cedar Creek Teacher of the Year, and that is Mrs. Mantegna. I'm so proud and honored to work with Mrs. Mantegna. I think so is everybody else in our building and in this district. She's joined here by some close friends. We are also happy to celebrate her. Mrs. Mantegna has been a teacher for thirty years, and twenty-five of those years have been at Cedar Creek, and that is amazing. She's taught first grade, second grade, fourth grade. Mrs. Mantegna is one of those teachers that no matter what you ask her, she does. She leads committees, she gets grants, she brings in sustainable change. One of the qualities that I love so much about her as a teacher is her honesty and her integrity. She is always going to tell me her true feelings about something, you know, good or bad, that's okay. That's, listen, that's what we need, right? That helps us grow in schools. And anybody that walks into her classroom knows that she leads with her heart. Mrs. Mantegna works to build independence in students. She always, always, always has the students lead the way when it comes to expectations and setting classroom rules. She takes their input and voice into consideration. She believes in students taking ownership for their learning and growing from their mistakes, and that's always a difficult conversation, and she is happy to have that conversation with our students, and that's so important. She's a champion for all children, and she encourages them to advocate for themselves. She believes that part of her role as an educator is to help students feel comfortable so that they can grow socially and academically. I have to tell you, when I was writing this and I was thinking about Mrs. Mantegna, I couldn't help but think about one of my favorite teachers as a child, and that was Ms. Frizzle in the Magic School Bus. I see somebody saying yes. And she said, "Take chances, make mistakes, and get messy," right? And that's how we learn and grow, and Mrs. Mantegna does that with her students. So again, I am so honored to recognize Mrs. Mantegna as the Cedar Creek Teacher of the Year. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Fiedler, the Principal of Forkett River School.
Good evening, Dr. Brer, and members of the Board of Education and the great community members of Lacy. I am honored to introduce the Forkett River Schools Teacher of the Year, Ms. Sue Weaver. Come on down. Mrs. Weaver is a graduate of Jackson Memorial High School and Georgian Court University, where she earned her bachelor's degree. Mrs. Weaver's learning never stops, as she is always researching, implementing the latest cutting-edge practices and techniques to help her students excel socially, emotionally, and academically. Mrs. Weaver's professional career as an elementary school teacher began in 1995, when she started teaching at the Lucy Ann Holman Elementary School in Jackson, where she went to school as a young child. After the birth of her son Louis, and then her daughter Kelly, Mrs. Weaver took a break from her professional career to take on the most important job, which is that of being a mom. She returned to the profession eighteen years ago, when she was hired by the Lacy Township Board of Education to work at the Forkett River School. During her tenure here at the Forkett River School, she has served as a first-grade teacher, a fourth-grade teacher, an instructional interventionalist, and presently, a third-grade teacher. Additionally, Mrs. Weaver is our resident Environmental Science Club advisor, who with her students lead many environmental awareness programs for our school, making us better. Mrs. Weaver's passion, creativity, and dedication are boundless. She prides herself on connecting with each and every student to inspire their self-worth, confidence, and self-assurance. Mrs. Weaver, who was inspired to become a teacher by her late father and career middle school teacher Jim Murphy, captures her vision for her students with the following quote: "Those we teach should feel empowered by the knowledge they gain to become highly productive members of society." This evening, Mrs. Weaver is joined by her daughter Kelly, Kelly of the Waves, her son Louis, and her husband Lou, all of which are Lacy graduates, by the way. Mrs. Weaver, on behalf of past and present students and staff members of the Forkett River School, congratulations on being named the Forkett River Schools Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Sue. At this time, I'm happy to introduce Mr. Brewer from Lenoka Harbor School.
Good evening, everybody, and congratulations to all of our winners. I'd like to introduce Moka Harbor Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Regina Ferruzza. Now she makes her way down. If you've been to any of Lenoka's performances, you know it's a Ferruzza family affair. So her husband Steve and her daughters Lucy and Sophie are here as well. Give them a big round of applause. Mrs. Ferruzza has deep ties to the community, not only being a resident, but having sent her children through our schools as well. It should come as no surprise that Mrs. Ferruzza is being honored here tonight. Mrs. Ferruzza has been an employee in the district, you're not going to get that married, since 1989. Her first assignment in Forkett River. Then she came over to Lenoka in 1999, and she's been a legend ever since. If you were to watch one of her performances that she used to direct it, you would think the only way to get children to do that would be with a cattle prod and whip. She does it with a strong work ethic, a joy, and a smile. I don't know how she does it. Her words of encouragement are second to none. I'm not sure that Mrs. Ferruzza sees it as work. I think she thinks she's just playing with children, and that it's just a natural calling. I really do. During her time at Lenoka, Mrs. Ferruzza has been involved in just about every aspect of performance in our building, whether it's her own choral concerts, the recorder clubs, supporting band concerts, Arbor Day celebrations, Flag Day, or putting together something last minute at a promotion ceremony. If students are singing, dancing, or playing a musical instrument, Mrs. Ferruzza can be found. She inspires her students to appreciate music, and they certainly desire to improve, just so they can make her proud. I have five songs that came through Lenoka, and I promise you, they all played the recorder. I can hear Hot Cross Buns and Ode to Joy in my sleep. The staff and students at Lenoka Harbor are so blessed to have her. On behalf of Mrs. Kilmary, the staff at LHS, and our students, I'd like to wish you congratulations to Mrs. Ferruzza, our 2024 Teacher of the Year. At this time, I'd like to call down Mrs. Donnie, you're the Principal at Mill Pond School.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. So, good evening, everyone, and such a wonderful night celebrating all of our Lacy Township Teachers of the Year. This one is my most favorite evenings. It's a great honor as an administrator, teacher, parent, and community member to celebrate these wonderful educators that have shown such dedication towards the success of their students. Congratulations to all of you. Tonight, I have the privilege of representing Mill Pond Elementary School, and it is with great pride that I introduce our Mill Pond Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Sherry Heck. Mrs. Heck is accompanied tonight by her husband Keith and son Mason. Although her daughter Madison could not be here, I know she's thinking about you. We all know how important it is to have a strong network of support to go home to, so we thank you, Keith, Mason, Madison, for being there for Sherry. Thank you. Her history of educating our youngest learners began at Chippensburg University. Her passion for teaching stems from her very own childhood experiences. Her dedication to giving each child the best kindergarten experience possible has led her here this evening. As a kindergarten teacher at Mill Pond this year, had a few challenges, so Sherry packed up many years of memories, teaching materials, and items that just made it her classroom, and moved to Mill Pond to be a part of something very special. Her perseverance and determination to provide her students with the best kindergarten experience has brought her to this stage this evening. Throughout this year, she was an integral part of our team as we created a community. Her ability to work collaboratively was the catalyst that made many team initiatives successful. Mrs. Heck has a unique way of creating bonds with her students, the staff, the students' families, everyone that walks the halls, that lasts for years and years. I can stand here and say a lot of great things about Sherry. I've known her for a very long time. However, I thought it was more important to hear what a few of her colleagues had to say. Sherry, definitely a team player, deserves to be recognized for all of her efforts in helping not only her coworkers, but for her work in helping her students achieve success. One wonderful woman, who loves her job. One wonderful woman, who loves her job no matter what is thrown her way, and comes in every day with a smile on her face. Energetic, nothing slows Sherry down. She is a great educator with so much to offer. This year, I've been truly fortunate to have Mrs. Heck on my team. Her patience and compassion have been an inspiration, especially when dealing with everything that we have going on. So I wasn't surprised, and I'm extremely proud to have Sherry represent Mill Pond as our Teacher of the Year. Congratulations, Sherry.
Can I have all staff members of your please come down, please? Teachers, please. Mrs. Heck, would you come back down? Could you come back down? For your job, please.
So let's keep our staff members of the month now, keep going. Is Kathy Robinson and Dana Glenn here with us? As they're making their way down, I'm going to tell you a little bit about Kathy and Dana. I'm going to start with Kathy. Kathy is a paraprofessional at Lacey Township High School, and nominated by eleven of her peers. This is what they had to say. I'm not going to read all of it, because I'd be here until Friday. So I took a snippet, yes. "My students and I love when Kathy is assigned to class. As well as her happy attitude, she has an amazing rapport with the students. She helps out any student who needs it, as well as the student she is assigned to. She is truly a part of any class that she participates in. She goes well above and beyond her role. She's an amazing and well-loved member of the Lacey Township High School paraprofessional staff. Her rapport with students, teachers, and administration is beyond compare. She embodies the school tenets of tradition of pride and tradition of excellence every single day. Her easygoing manner and willingness to help in matters large or small, coupled with her kind heart and integrity, make her a mentor to her peers. And her love for the job and the people in it make her an outstanding candidate for this honor. Congratulations, Kathy." And don't go anywhere, because, you know, we have a video, so. All right, let me tell you a little bit about Dana, who's also a paraprofessional. She is at Mill Pond, nominated by quite a few of your peers as well. Dana was my student many, many years ago, and now serves as a para at Mill Pond. Sorry, wrote that wrong. She also volunteers at Lacey Township Middle School, that's why I got confused, actively assisting the drama club twice a week at our rehearsals, and also all of our performances. This week before our big Hershey Park field trip, an eighth-grade chorus student fractured her ankle. This student still desperately wanted to attend this long-awaited trip despite her pain and discomfort. During the trip, Dana saw that the student was having a pretty miserable time just waiting for her friends on roller coasters. Dana immediately swooped in and saved the day. She went to guest services and determined which activities the student could still participate in. She pushed the student's wheelchair for eight hours up and down Hilli Hershey Park, and ensured she had a blast shopping, eating, and riding what rides allowed for her wheelchair. She went above and beyond to make this student's day. I am so grateful that Dana was on this trip, saw a student in distress, and did everything possible to turn the situation around. It is for these reasons that Dana, among many other, was named June Staff Member of the Month. Congratulations." All right, Mr. Leidl, we have a video?
Good morning. You are in line, and today is Tropical Tuesday, so join us as we go into paradise, as we are congratulating you now. Glenn, who is one of our staff members of the month, follow me.
Your staff of the month!
Oh, my God!
Oh, my God, the birthday!
Thank you!
Can we go inside?
Yes!
Hi!
Wait, come on, look!
She's in there!
I'm a choral director at the middle school, and I nominated Dana Rose Glenn for Staff Member of the Month because she went above and beyond when she was chaperoning our film show to Hershey Park. Dana was there as a regular chaperone, and she saw a student that we had that had been in an accident the week before. It was in a wheelchair. She saw her texting her parents that she was having a horrible time, and she wanted to go home, and Dana just swooped in and completely changed this kid's day. She took her to guest services, she figured out what ride she could be on, she personally pushed this kid's wheelchair up and down the hills of Hershey Park all day long. They went shopping, they ate ice cream, they rode the ride she could ride. She just made this kid's day, and it's fabulous. I'm so proud of Dana. She's a former student of mine and a Lacey grad, and it was great to see the Lacey tradition go on.
All right, we are taking the staff of the month. This month, we're celebrating Kathy Robinson. She's going to be here. Do you staff members of the district nominate the new staff member of the month?
Thanks to the recommendations of over eleven people nominating her for Staff Member of the Month, I am proud to talk about her today. She has been with this district for many, many years, and I really hope that Kathy, you are leaving here with half as many memories as you've left among the people who are here, students, staff, athletes, everyone that you've touched the hearts of. You're going to have really big shoes to fill when you retire, not just because you're a size ten, but because of all people who've helped you, from motivational boards around the building, helping out in the Special Olympics, the performing arts, assisting staff anywhere that they need, and even the bathroom duty diaries of the students that come to talk to you when you're on bathroom duty, and helping them through anything that they might need. When you think of a paraprofessional, you think of people with warm hearts who fill in the blanks for students of anything that they might need in their daily life, and you've definitely accomplished that. Congratulations. All right, and while Mr. Solinski is setting up for a photo, we have our final Lacey Now of the school year, and I know Mr. Merman wouldn't want to take a nice break for July and August.
Yeah, he didn't send me out.
We have no Lacey Now?
I don't think so, not now.
I'm going to have to have a chat with Mr. Merman. No, that's my fault, totally. Okay, he's taking a break now. There is no Lacey Now. Okay, we're good.
All right, good stuff. Let's get to work.
That's right, I just remembered, the May was for both May and June, so, yes, I apologize, Mr. Merman, he did tell me that.
That's right.
All right, so I'm just going to, a few more comments for me. I do want to thank Mr. Merman for all of the work that went into making those Lacey Nows. We changed it to Lacey Now because it certainly was longer than a Lacey Minute. Once again, I want to congratulate all of our teachers. I want to wish our students and families a happy summer. We have three days left. Unfortunately, it's going to be the three hottest days, and I know that our elementary schools are going to be hurting a little bit, but we are on an early dismissal day. And once again, while I still have my composure, I just want to thank the entire district, the staff, the administrators, the Board of Education, for the honor, the honor of having served here as first middle school vice principal, middle school principal, assistant superintendent, and for the last five years, superintendent. I know he's not here, but my friend and mentor, Mr. Richard Stardub, is who hired me, and yeah, he taught us well, right?
Are we good?
Yeah, we are good. No, we are not good, sorry. Mr. Solinski has to do the school self-assessment, HIB grades review. Ready?
Yes, briefly.
Yeah.
So we do a self-assessment every year on our harassment, intimidation, and bullying policy, and how we apply that legislation. Oh, they can leave while I'm talking, I don't mind, don't worry. This is, it's all posted anyway, you can go look at it on the website. So we do a self-assessment every year. This is for last school year, this is for 2223. This is a statutory requirement that I talk about at an open public board meeting. It is posted on our website. The maximum score every school can get is a seventy-eight. We score between a seventy-three and a seventy-five for all of our schools. It is a self-assessment. We grade ourselves on HIV programs, approaches, and other initiatives, training by the BOE, other staff instruction and training programs, curriculum and instruction, HIV personnel, reporting procedures, investigation procedures, reporting, and you get a final grade. So Cedar Creek School was a seventy-three out of seventy-eight, Forkett River School seventy-three out of seventy-eight, high school seventy-four out of seventy-eight, middle school is a seventy-two out of seventy-eight, Lenoka Harbor seventy-three out of seventy-eight, and Mill Pond School seventy-three out of seventy-eight. So our district grade is a seventy-three. Okay, I've done it, I've reported it, you can look at these results. I am the district HIB coordinator, you can always call me, and every school has their own local coordinator, you can call them as well. Really exciting, right? There you have it. Okay, that's part of the legislation that was enacted about a dozen years ago. It has helped us in many ways. It also occupies a lot of our time, but, you know, well worth it in many cases. So that's HIB reporting, thank you. It's not applause-worthy, don't do that. It's truly not. It's just a lot of work. We'll be on a five-minute break here, so it seems.
Just give us two minutes, folks, we'll start public comment.
An audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand when called upon. They will state their name, address, and intention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the Board President. Comments will be made one issue at a time. Comments will be limited to five minutes. The audience member shall be recognized twice, too, who have wished to comment, to be recognized. This portion of the meeting is for public comment only, and there are going to be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our business in public. Everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there is an established chain of command to follow. I would personally like to apologize for last meeting. There was a misunderstanding on the timer, the first person that went up. Unfortunately, the timer was not started. If anybody's watched the video from last meeting, they'll notice myself bending over to Ms. Ornsby saying, "Hey, it seems like this person's over to five minutes," and it was a mistake, the timer was not ever started from that point on. So tonight, I will confirm that the timer started. You will have exactly five minutes to speak. If the timer goes off, you will be called upon to sit down and come back up and finish your public comment at that point. Any questions? Good. Anyone for public comment, please? Yes, ma'am.
Lisa Edgeworth, Hilltop Drive in Lenoka. Good evening. I just wanted to follow up with something on the record. I know that Mr. Conaty is not here this evening, and he's the chair of the...
Policy.
Policy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I sent an email some time ago, and it was slightly addressed, but I don't think it's being addressed to the extent that it needs to.
Quick question, ma'am, who did you address that email to?
Mr. Conaty, Mr. Bell, and Ms. Klaus.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and Mr. Conaty had gotten back to me, and he briefly said something. So I just wanted to follow up on the record about the varsity letters for performing arts. There's a Senate bill that at a minimum, every program that competes must be afforded the opportunity to achieve a varsity letter. Select Choir is such a group, and they've been competing in the Teen Arts Festival for a long time. The Jazz Band is another group that continually competes, and the Drama, while they don't compete through no fault of their own, as they're not given the opportunity to, even though the opportunity does exist, with the amount of the hours that the international thespian members put into their craft, they also need to be afforded an opportunity to achieve a varsity letter. This recognition is something that needs to happen. It needs to be given to our performing arts students. We must remember them when we're recognizing our Lacey students. These gifted and talented young people should always be remembered. Now, I put off asking about the varsity letter because of all that's been going on with the funding and the budget, but I can't, and I won't be putting that off any longer. These kids deserve for us all to have their back and show them and give them recognition. Now, I just found out this evening that part of the reason it was put on the backburner is because some of them get chords at graduation, so they figured, okay, we'll just wait on that. The only ones that get chords at graduation are the drama students for the International Thespians, the International Thespian Society, they get chords at graduation. But the varsity letters is a student recognition in and amongst of itself where, you know, their friends see them in it. They, it's not like getting a chord at graduation. This is something that other students, their peers, recognize that they are a valued member and that they work hard in their craft. So for the jazz band members who compete all the time, the select choir members who do compete, they just got done with the Teen Arts Festival, there's no question whether they should be afforded the opportunity to achieve those varsity letters legally. And as far as the international thespian members, the amount of time that they put into their craft, and I don't think anybody here would disagree with that, the amount of hours these students practice and, you know, perform and just, I mean, I can't even the, I'm stuttering now, but they just, they blow me away, and it's not just because I have two students in there. They're not even thespians, my guys, so it's not like I'm saying, hey, my kids deserve. I'm fighting for the ones that are out there, and they're deserving. Not that my children might not be, but that's not why I'm here. I'm not fighting for just two students, I'm fighting for all of them who... I'm fighting for all of them who work very hard.
So, thank you for your comments. I just want to let you know and everybody else know that it is a topic that we talked about in policy. And we will talk about it again for our July policy meeting. So the conversation's not over.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Quick question. Do you do any research? Any other districts currently doing this?
Yes, they are, and I did give that information to...
Awesome. I'll reach out to Mr. Tony.
The members, okay?
Thank you so much.
Sorry, I just got back from work. I'm a student of Lacy Township High School, and I just want to thank Dr. Pereira for everything she's done for me and my friend Logan. She's honestly been a super big help with this entire budget process. And I can't thank her enough for the entire learning experience and the whole, and just opening my eyes even more and just being an amazing person to not only me, but to everybody else. And I can't thank you enough. I'm sad to see you go, but I know you'll... Somebody is gonna... They're gonna love you just as much as we do. And I hope you get as much love as we give you and stuff. But I just wanted to say thank you for everything that you've done. And I love you, and have the best time.
Tony Rizzoli, Sunrise Beach. From the last meeting, for the budget meeting, I wanted to follow up more on transparency. As I discussed last time, open up the school community to all the taxpayers, not just people who are involved with school activities, teachers, students, you know, but everybody in the village, okay? Should be aware of what's going on in our school districts, all the taxpayers. And in reference to that, I was at the township committee meeting, and I brought up in a situation to them, I'm going to bring the same thing up to you, but I need to ask the president a question, if you don't mind. Was the adequate notice of meaning read tonight at the first part of the meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Which was law?
There was nobody in the crowd, but yes, I...
I understand. I wasn't here. I just wanted to confirm it was done. All right, under that, as far as I know, there must be adequate notice consists of two newspapers, minimum. And you could check with your barrister if I'm correct or not under the Open Public Records Act, 1975. As far as I know, would anybody on a dais... dais, or anybody in this room tell me where I can buy a Lacy beacon? According to the Library of Congress, it hasn't been in existence since 1984. We, at the beginning of every public meeting, say, "Asbury Park Press, end the beacon." That's not transparency. That's giving wrong information to everyone, okay? What I'd like you to do is the same thing I said to the township. Please look into it and correct it. If our barrister was earning his $165 an hour under number 63 of tonight's agenda, you would have known that in advance because he was doing his job right. But evidently, that's not up to me. I'm not on the board. I don't employ him. That's that. Next, I personally think it's a violation of the Sunshine Law on anything that was said at any meeting before 1984 when it was discontinued. It may not be valid, but I'm not going to challenge that, okay? Maybe somebody else might want to challenge everything that was done, but not this guy. Okay, tonight, under number six and number seven on the agenda, there's excessive revenue between six and seven of $2.5 million. And it's going to the Capital Reserve and the maintenance accounts. Where did we get that money? I mean, we're, you know, we're scraping for dollars, and I'm reading about $2.5 million that's being moved. Also, under number eight, there's a fund balance of a million. Where's this money coming from? If we don't have any money, where's the money coming from? That's my question.
Number six and number seven, they're estimates that we can go up to. If you read it, it says we could go up to. We most likely won't have that money. But it's resolution we do every year that...
It's bookkeeping only?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have that money? See, the way it says it, though, it's kind of, you know, it's not stipulated just as a bookkeeping, cleanup type of thing. The way it's stated, and me not being that educated in reference to it, it's money. Where the heck did the money come from if we don't have any money? So maybe in the future, when it's presented that way in the agenda, maybe try to clean up the language so that it's... Could be more understandable? That's all I have. Thank you very much.
So Mr. Rizzoli, we'll bold and underline "up to," but it clearly says "up to." So that's the one thing I wanted to say. The second thing is, last month, you talked about communication. So what I want to say about that is there is no possible way that this board or this district could get the addresses and names of every single community member. What we do have access to is our website and our automated calls, which, true, does go to our families. But that's why we have a website. And every communication that I've ever made about our budget has always been posted to our website. And I've always said at the end of every meeting, please check our website for all communications related to our school district. And it's incumbent upon the community to work with us and visit the website and see those communications. Which, you know, is a reminder for me when I think about the huge Mental Health and Wellness Night that we had not too long ago. You know, that's a big topic for us. And we advertise, and we advertise, and we send emails and automated calls, and we use Remind and social media. And if there were 60 people there, that was a lot. And half of those were staff members. So it's not that we don't communicate, and it's not that we don't try. It's that we use every mechanism available to us, but we need the community to meet us halfway and visit our website to find that information. There's no way we can send communication out to everybody who lives in Lacy. The township can do that, but that's their role. And we would never ask them for that information because not only that, we don't have the postage or the envelopes or the manpower or the money to do that.
No, I understand... I understand that, okay? But what I'm saying to you is when you stipulate the beacon... Don't stipulate. Maybe get with Veronica in the township committee. I wrote the same thing to them, the same thing I just said to you. Be consistent with them and how they're approaching their adequate notice because they're under the same law that you're under. It's the Sunshine Law, okay? So maybe be consistent with them on how they do it at the beginning of their meeting, and you do it at the beginning of your meeting. And I'm going to miss bantering with you.
Likewise.
Thank you for your comment, and thank you for the acknowledgement of the beacon. Appreciate it. Anybody else have a public comment?
Yes, sir.
Nick Spaltrow. I'm from the Seabreeze community. I think you all know the Seabreeze community. I think we're sometimes referred to as the cash cow for Lacy, which we resent, resent that designation. 568 homes in Seabreeze. I think the average property tax levy is probably a little bit north of $9,000. Mine's 11. We send no one to school here. So we have zero impact on the school, zero. We don't cost you guys anything. But yet, we're paying the bill. And with regard to the gentleman here talking about communication, we didn't know what's going on here. We have a property manager in Seabreeze. 568 homes and probably 1,100 voters. Or in my household, there's four. You know, we deserve to be communicated to. We're finding this information out secondhand or when, you know, somebody pops up and says, "Hey, here's an article on a Lacy patch. They're going to raise our tax 9.9% in addition to the county and town levy." We got to know about this. We got to be part of the process. We are providing a 100% societal benefit to you, to the school, you know? And we do our part. But recognize that there's a lot of retired people living on fixed incomes. The agents in Seabreeze, in some cases, are 70s and 80s. These are people... Some people have been retired for years. And with respect to inflation, you know, they're just not keeping up. People talk about senior frees. Well, the reality is, in Seabreeze, not a lot of people are eligible for senior frees because people do have, you know, income and assets that exceed what, you know, the senior frees relies on. So we are getting squeezed. There's got to be some mechanism here to address this issue. And, you know, not that we don't want to pay our share, but I think we're paying more than our fair share. I think that we're seeing affordable housing, more and more affordable housing coming into Lacy. They're bringing in children. They're increasing enrollment. In my view, looking at what they're levied, they're not paying their fair share. Inequitable, hands down. My only... My question for, you know, you, Mr. President, is is the public going to have the opportunity to vote on his budget? And I say that for the benefit of the others that are here.
Unfortunately, no.
So we're just getting this 9.9% shoved down our throat.
It's not 9.9%.
Well, that's what it's...
The cap is at two. The governor came in to us, ripped the money out of our hands, and said, "If you want it back, go back to your taxpayers." We lost 138 positions of employees in the past five years. We lost over $7 million this year. Came in and just ripped it out from us. And our lovely governor said, "If you want it back, you have to go up to the taxpayers." I'm making a change in that 2% cap.
Well, I understand that. And I understand that, you know, we live in a town that's, you know, predominantly Republican, and we have a Democratic administration. Whether that has something to do with it or not, I don't know. I can only speculate, okay? But, you know, the... Again, you got a retirement community here. We don't impact the school. There's got to be some sort of mechanism to offset the impact on us.
Please, reach out to us. If you come up with that mechanism, we'd love to hear it. Because this board has sat tirelessly and spent hours going over that budget, cutting and crisping and trimming and doing what we possibly could to make it pass.
Well, you know, Mr. President...
We did have four... I don't know how the date's written down again, but the other day, we had four meetings advertised, and we're going to change that beacon issue. I'll take partial blame for that. Where we had budget workshops where the public had the time to come in and speak to us about that.
We were unaware. We really were unaware. You know, people aren't... People aren't looking... Unless, you know, we... We have a Facebook page in our community that we start notifying people to. So, you know, we get the information out when we get it. But a lot of times, quite frankly, how we found out about this was through Regina DeCenza. She was the one that kind of sent an email out and said, "Hey, do you know what's going on?" And we were like, "What? No, we didn't know that."
And you realize without that budget pass, we're looking at 40 to 60 kids per class. We're looking at pay to sports. We're looking at pay for busing. There's numerous things that...
I understand the impact. You know, I've had children at school, you know, but...
I'm so sorry, sir. I took some of your time, but unfortunately...
I... Look, I come from the corporate world.
Sir, I'm sorry. I have to stay at a five-minute max. You're more than welcome back up again. Just give us... Let someone else go. I have to keep to the five-minute time. Thank you so much. Anybody else have a public comment?
Allison Hollister, Fork River, New Jersey. As a parent of a middle school eighth grader who is going to be graduating on Wednesday along with other parents and their friends, we are deeply appalled at the lack of memorial that was put into their yearbook regarding the passing of a student in eighth grade, Chelsea Deal. The high school, as well as Fork River School, put the names of the students who have passed. This is a lack of disrespect to the Deal family, as well as their friends, especially since they paid out scholarships to seniors in the memory of their daughter. I just wanted to put that on record. I also want to express that last week's budget meeting was a very atrocious meeting to attend. We can all agree to disagree. We all have our own opinions. And while some may get heated and some may get... Some may get heated, sorry. But when some may get heated, there should be... There should be what Ms. Armato had said. We all should have some kindness and compassion towards the people who are speaking. For some people to say that just move and that we don't care about you is wrong on so many levels. Everybody in this township pays taxes. Everybody in this township pays for the kids to go to school here. It's not just a simple move or we don't care about you. We do care. We do care about the kids who go to school here. I care as well. We should have a plan in place. There should be a plan going forward. As we all know, Mr. Murphy doesn't leave office until January 1st of 2026. At any point next year, he could reenact S2, and the possibility of us losing more money is still always on the table. While I'm all in for doing what's best for the kids, for the teachers, for anybody not to lose a job, what is good... What good is a 9% hike doing for this district? At this point, it is just a splint on a really bad injury to make sure that we could keep going. There is no after-school extra help for students in the high school. That was cut. There are no courtesy... There's no courtesy busing. There is, at this point, no freshman sports. At this point, what is there? What do we have to do? The tax increase is going to affect many. Like Mr. Armato and Mrs. Armato had expressed last week, it just doesn't affect the taxpayers. It also affects the local small businesses, single families, renters, everybody. Like somebody said last week, there are a lot of chiefs who are getting paid a lot of money, but those chiefs have not taken a pay cut. At what point do we stop the bleeding? Dr. Pereira, you stood up here, and you said that you would continue to fight, and then you sent out your resignation notice that you were retiring. I hope that you continue to fight like you said you would because being that you did fight for us within this last couple of years, we all know that if we're given a certain budget, we should stick to that budget. We all knew that S2 was coming, and at this point, nothing was done to put money away. Yes, we have bled through our savings, and yes, we have tried and tried to push things back, but still, 130 teachers were cut. Those teachers belong here. Those teachers were in... Sorry. Those teachers belong to be here, and those teachers are out somewhere else changing the lives of other students. I hope that, you know... I hope that this 9% increase will help put back into the school what we need, schools what we need. But unfortunately, I don't know what next year's going to hold. I hope that you guys could just come up with a plan for the next couple of years so as this way, we don't have to be... We don't have to keep fighting these budget cuts, keep fighting for our teachers, keep fighting for our students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else have a public comment? I'm just going to see if anyone else has a public comment? Yes?
Good evening, Lacy citizens and members of the school board. First, there were some comments that were made tonight that I'd like to address. There's the senior freeze, okay? The senior freeze, I want people to understand how that works. The senior freeze, I want people to understand how that works because you actually have to pay the taxes first and then you get reimbursed the following year. If you don't have the money to pay the taxes, you're in trouble. And it just keeps going up year after year after year. So it isn't like you get it out of your taxes, like they reduce it out of your tax bill. It comes a year later. So that isn't really going to be relief for people who are really living on a very limited The other thing that I want to make a comment about is what happened at the meeting last week. Our board president could not control the meeting or refused to control the meeting. We had a lot of employees here who didn't like the message, the message of the questions, the difficult questions that a taxpayer had asked them. I mean, as a taxpayer, I'm being asked to contribute an extra 10% in taxes for the funding of the school district. But the individuals who work here, the teachers' union, I asked a simple question, what are you giving back? I mean, we could have worked on this together. You could have taken half and we could have taken half as the taxpayers. That would have been more fair. You're not giving up your longevity increases. You're not giving up your step increases and you're not giving up your cost of living increases. And the entire budget is all you, okay? Let's be clear about that. I don't know why that didn't happen, but it should have happened. This approach is, is just not acceptable. And also the behavior of the people who work in this school district at that meeting was appalling. The things that were said to members of the public, that our educators would behave in such a way, banging on tables, screaming and yelling was beyond appalling. What kind of role model are you employing in this school district? How are we going to have young leaders if this is what they're taught, that their teachers are teaching them? I just find it appalling and I, I know for the people who did speak up, there's a lot of senior citizens here. There are single people in our town. There are people who are living on living, uh, limited incomes. And we all have a voice. You want our money, you certainly want our money, but you don't want us to say anything. We're supposed to be silent. Sorry, it doesn't work that way. And that is just a matter of fact. So the 9%, you know, 9.9% increase, it didn't really have to happen. You know, I've been coming to these meetings for 14 years, probably more than anybody, you know? I've come and I've spoken. My big thing has been about student achievement and improving the levels of the school district. I want to know why we have, year after year, all of our scores are so low and why do certain school districts continually perform so well? And what are we doing wrong? Obviously, there's something we're doing wrong. And I'm, I'm happy about this. Dr. Pereira is finally leaving. She actually is taking my recommendation, which was something I asked for four years ago.
Has nothing to do with you.
Yes.
Zero.
Yes, but you're going to Red Bank Catholic as a principal and I wish you all the success in your new job, but you are leaving a sinking ship that you helped create. That's just a matter of fact. And it's not only about the money. Good leaders are able to figure out a challenge and they are able to see the end of the tunnel and what that will mean. And that is the problem that we have had in this school district. And I am hoping to God that the school board will do the right thing, hire an extremely qualified superintendent who has a record of turning around an underperforming school district and that this school board gives them the power to come in here and do the reforms and the changes that are needed for all of us, for the children, for the taxpayers. If the school district is successful in raising its levels, all of us will be in a success rate, including the people who don't have kids, because our property values will actually rise. More people will want to come here to live, to come to our schools. No matter what you say to me or how you feel about things, the student achievement is the bottom line. It's supposed to be about our kids' education, the bottom line. And we've had a lot of nonsense going on in these schools over all these years. And I just want to make sure that tonight, that the Giordano censure is going to be read at this meeting because that is part of the law and the state ethics commission.
I'm Governor Mr. Biden. Could you please have a seat? I'll call you back up again.
Okay.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Anybody else have a public comment? Yes, ma'am. Could you hang on one second? Ma'am, I did point that way, but I pointed at this lady. If you could just have a seat and she's done, you can go next. I don't want you to go back up the stairs. Just have a seat there. So when she's done, you can go. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Diana McKenzie, Oak Street, Forkett River. I apologize for having a sore throat, but I do want to read this. Dear members of the Lacey Township Board of Education, before I start, I would like to thank you for volunteering your time and for working hard on this budget. I mentioned in my email last week that I support the tax increase of 9.9% approved by our governor. Yes, as a board of education, you need to be fiscally responsible, but our students deserve a thorough and efficient education. This 9.9% increase will also increase our base amount for next year's budget, which will be a big help going forward. As per the governor, this 9.9% is for this year only. For the past five years, our tax rate per $100 valuation increased at a much slower rate and a slower pace than our municipal rate. This 9.9% increase is needed to catch up. No one likes a tax increase, but we can all look around and see their prices to maintain our district, our buildings, including utilities, fuel, building maintenance have all gone up, just like they have in your homes. There are numerous building projects all around our town. Besides the numerous random homes going up, these projects include the area by Applebee's near JT Bagels, behind JT Bagels, the completion of projects along with near Kate Nally's, the area by CVS, the current carpet store that's going to be demolished with townhouses approved for there, and units above the laundromat, and also new proposed homes near Parker's Point. They will all bring students into our schools. None of these projects are age restricted. How can we increase class sizes to 40 plus students without even knowing how many children will reside in those homes? Maybe 200, maybe 300? The number is unknown. This estimate doesn't even include students that would be eligible for our current preschool or even students moving into our town without a district placements where we would have to set the tuition costs. Yes, we strive for higher test scores, but with 40 plus students in a class, that task is even harder. Small class size is best practice, not larger ones. When it comes to a final vote, please do the right thing and vote yes for the increase to our budget. Our students deserve a thorough and efficient education with small class sizes, fabulous programs, excellent staff, academic programs, the performing arts, sports and other curriculum areas. Let's support Armato, a tradition of pride and a tradition of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am. Yes, here it is. Thank you.
First of all, I have to say I apologize for wearing the wrong shoes here.
Ma'am, if you could just pull that microphone down a little bit closer. Thank you so much.
I only have one thing to address and, and that's the time for the next meeting that you're planning, the four o'clock. It doesn't give the people who are working a chance to come to those meetings. They're out there working hard to make money, to pay the taxes. It's a whole different age group than me and for you to make that time, it wasn't good for the meeting on Monday and it's not good for the meeting that you're going to have about the tax. I, I strongly urge you to change, change that. At least give us, we, the people of town, paying for the schools, a chance to attend the meeting. Thank you.
Ma'am, real quick, could you just state your name, please?
Linda Miller.
Mrs. Miller, if I should for you.
Yes.
What about people that work night shift? Is it fair to them too?
The majority of.
We can't accommodate to every possible person in here. We have, we have a police officer, we have people working the post office, we have people that work stocking shelves at Walmart in town, you know? So, so now we're going to try to, we try to accommodate best, but the reason, and I stated before the meeting, I don't know if you heard me or not, the reason for the four o'clock meeting is it became a backup plan. God forbid we get a rain day for graduation, we can do it on Friday and still have time to make graduation for our seniors that earned what they're for years ago. That was the reasoning of the four o'clock meeting.
Wow.
Graduation's Thursday, middle school's Wednesday, high school's Thursday, and then a backup plan, if we had to push back Wednesday or Thursday, we have Friday as a backup plan.
Well, I did hear that.
Okay.
And it seems that the gentleman that became really upset and left because that was the same speech you gave him.
Right.
Unwilling to stay here and listen. Well, isn't there any other day or any other time that the meeting could be held at seven o'clock? I mean, there's seven days in a week and there's 30 days in a month. Is there a, a time slot? I mean, do you have to have it before a certain date?
Yes.
So when is it, Dylan?
What is that date?
July 1st.
I don't have a calendar in front of me.
Please, we just can't have people yelling from the audience? Everyone has a chance to come up and speak.
I, I don't have a calendar in front of me, so I don't really know what you're telling me without looking at a calendar. But I'm just hoping that you can reconsider and have it in the evening when more people can come. I, I know people work at night, all night long or whatever, but the majority of people work from nine to five, the majority. And we know that teachers usually work eight to four. So it gives the, the teachers and the people who work in the township a chance to come to a meeting at four, but it does not give a lot of the community that work till six to come. So I'm just asking you to reconsider the time.
Thank you for your comment, ma'am. Anyone else for first time speaking for public comment? Back to the gentleman up top.
Nick Spaltrow from Seabreeze again. What I wanted to say, but by the way, I, I just want to second what this nice lady had to say, that I really think you need to really accommodate people and change that meeting date. I don't know how you do it, but, you know, in time, but I, I think that's something you need to do. What I wanted to say before was, I come from the corporate world, been doing it for a long time, you know, nearly 40 years in fact. When a business becomes unsustainable, you have to right-size it, we have to reorganize it. And, you know, I, I don't envy your position in doing what you're doing, the class sizes, you know, it's, it's, you know, not desirable at all. But, you know, at, at some point, things become unsustainable and, you know, in business, we take, businesses, we'll merge them together to flatten the organization, right? We eliminate layers of management. You know, we create efficiencies in there. And, you know, I think Lee Iacocca wrote in his book years ago, he says, I can cut 10% out of anything. And it's true. We've done it in the corporate world, amazingly enough. But at some point, you know, you got to look at the school system, you know, in aggregate and you got to say, do we merge the school with other towns? There's a regional high school up, up the road, you know? Do we regionalize the high school? How do you create efficiencies and maintain the quality of education? You know, our children need to be educated. They're our future. We want them to become doctors, lawyers, scientists, engineers. But, you know, at some point, we got to, it's got to be sustainable, it's got to be feasible. So, I mean, and that's probably a bigger problem than you folks can handle. I mean, maybe, you know, there's, there's other places around the United States where, you know, there's no such thing as local school districts, they're county, right? So they have larger school districts, but, you know, they have flatter organizations. That, that's the thing because, you know, again, the second, you know, what, uh, the other gentleman had said is the majority of the, of the school budget is salaries, you know, administrative and otherwise. Thank you.
Quick, quick.
Certainly.
I'd like to slide your comment. Are you currently working, sir?
I'm sorry?
Are you currently working?
I'm working, yes. I went back to, I was retired and went back to work.
Okay.
Otherwise, I can't afford to live here.
Were you working in 2018?
I was.
Okay. Are you making the same salary as 2018?
Not much more, actually.
Okay. Well, we're working on the same budget. We're down to our budget, annual budget as our 2018 finance. That's what budget number we're working with. That's how much money's been taken from this district. That we are currently today with the rising cost of fuel, the rising cost of health insurance, the rising cost of, you know, everything possible, books to programs, to lighting, to electric, to water, to sewer, to, you know, everything. We are operating on the same monetary value of 2018, this budget.
Like I said, I don't envy your position.
So when you say the corporate way of making cuts and feasibility, we've done it. Ms. Klaus, Mr. Armato has worked tirelessly, tires and all the administrators and these guys up here for saying, hey, cut your budget by this, cut your budget by that. We boil Iacocca out of the water with that 10% with the 18, 2018 budget.
Sounds like an unsustainable situation.
It is. And we're trying to do every can to sustain an education in this district. And that's why I'm voting yes, to keep the class size below 40 students per, per class. That small class size is known, small class size is where the students are going to gain the most.
Desirable, understood. But again, you got to be able to sustain it. And at some point, what do you do? You know, like I said, what's, what's the bigger picture here? How do you, you know, is there consolidation that could be done with other school districts to maintain that class size but lower the costs?
Awesome question. We'll look into that. That's an artist's to make to become a regional school. That comes from the state, but there's 4,200, 4,200 reasons why I'm voting yes. And that's the amount of students in this district.
Have you, one, one of the things that, and, you know, this is hearsay.
Sure.
We did have a member of our community, you know, mentioned to me, and they were close to the situation, but they said, you know, Monsignor Donovan, Lacey Township was one of their biggest draws of people. So, I mean, what is that? So people are willing to pay money to send their kids to, to Mon Don versus keeping them here. You know, what does that say about the quality of education too?
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Nice meeting you. Mr. Bidnik, I believe you're back.
Okay. We used to have 5,150 students. We're not, we've lost a lot of students. So when he talks about the numbers, well, how do you keep the same number of employees anyway, when you've had such a declining school district? And people left during COVID because of the draconian decisions that were made by the current board, not this board, there's been changes, but by this board and the administration, which affected a lot of children in our school district in a negative way. I know what I would have done if I were the superintendent. True leaders stand up for what they believe in and they fight and they do what they have to do. That did not happen here. Instead, students suffered, okay? That's one of the things. So a lot of people took their kids out of the school district, they're homeschooling them, they're sending them to private schools. I encourage people to do that. Quite frankly, there's a New Jersey school choice program. If you care about your kid's education and you can't afford to send them to a private school or to homeschool them, please look it up online and do the right thing. These are your kids. Look after their education. This school district has been declining for quite some time. I hate to say it, it's the truth. It's been, since I started speaking here 14 years ago, it has really gone downhill. And I have a question. When Mr. Startup was the superintendent and I came and spoke to some of these meetings, he put on the website all the employees of the school district with their salaries, their health benefit cost, the social security cost, the pension cost and everything else. Since all the money is now going to this, I am requesting that we do that again.
It's all available online.
No, no, not on your website.
On Asbury Park Press.
No, 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 no. And that's old. It's two or three years old. It should be current. We're paying the bills. It's all going for staff and salaries practically and we have a right to know. Every single person has. Every single person has the right to know and to scrutinize. And you know what? The more information we have, the more powerful we become. Information equals power. And by not being transparent, not having meetings where people can come to at times, especially about budget, which most of the people are working, is not being transparent. And yes, I do take record. Dr. Pereira has my email address because I've been emailing her for years. Do I ever get any notices about what's going on in the school district? No. And I'm very, very much concerned about what's going on here. So when I hear the garbage that comes out, the propaganda, it's not true. And we do have a right to be looking and scrutinizing. And I, I'm telling you, I can't wait till we get a new super in here. And I hope that some of the people on this school board will look to make sure that we get a person with great credentials, and I don't care what you have to pay them. If they can come in here, no, if they can come in here, you get a great leader who can turn this place around, they're worth their money and time, okay? That's my suggestion. And thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Lisa Edgeworth, Hilltop Drive, Winoka. I just, um, I had something I wanted to say earlier, and it was in my thing, but I, I missed it because I was just, up here, it just gets nerve-wracking. Anyway, I wanted to apologize for my part in any nonsense last week, okay? And when I personally said that I didn't care about people in the community, that's not, it's not accurate, okay? I do care very much about everybody in the community. I'm not just blowing smoke, okay? I care about everybody on the board, even whether you voted yes, whether you voted no, okay? We're all here as a community together. I truly mean that. And I apologize for saying that I don't care because I truly do care about everyone. I just think that most of the school messages that need to get out have to go to the people who care most about the kids. And, you know, that's gonna be the parents. So, I mean, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Just real quick on the public comment. Mr. Rizzoli, are you still here? Yes. I'm hearing that the Beacon is still being published, and that, that comes out every Thursday. I don't know if you can purchase it or if it's online. I don't know the situation. Okay. But we do advertise on that, and fortunately, that's a new way of, of newspapers. Can you buy it at Asbury Park Press? You get the what, the Beacon in the office? The hard copy or digital?
We get the hard copy, right?
Oh, we get a hard copy in the board office, so there's, there have to be available. I don't know, maybe they're not in store. Maybe you have to pay a monthly fee. Right. But you can purchase it online now and have it delivered to your home. You're a very smart guy, Mr. Rizzoli. I'm sure you can figure out. So, okay, I'm just clarifying that it is still being published. That's all. But we will, we'll look into it. We will. We'll look at it. If we, we're adopting, we're adopting tonight that we're advertising there, and if something changes, we'll do an amendment to it. Something tells me it's gonna be a positive one.
NJSA Cooperative with the hockey program. Is this our first pay-to-play for sports?
No, we've had this contract with Barnegat for a few years.
Okay. Is there any other sports where we're, have you considered pay-to-play or cooperative with any other sports to save money?
Yes, we're considering gymnastics as well.
Okay, so there is other sports that are in the future, in the works, where we can go and, and think about saving money now?
That's all I wanted to know. Thanks.
Okay. You good?
I'm good.
All right. Next, we go to the Board Committee Reports. Mr. Armando, would you mind filling in for Ms. Parker?
Sure.
Curriculum Committee, please.
Sure. Okay, so this is the Curriculum Committee Minutes. Um, the meeting was June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, two thirty P M. It was myself, Cheryl Armando, Dan Bell, Kim Klaas, and William Zalinski. The meeting adjourned at three fifteen P M. Um, we went over curriculum twenty twenty-two to twenty-three HIBR, uh, grade, grade report. Mr. Zalinski presented the HIBR grade report for twenty-two, twenty-three. This is a self-graded report that will be posted on the district website. The report for the year provides more detail than previous years on each of the categories that make up the self-study. Mr. Zalinski will present the report at the June Board of Education meeting, which he did earlier today. Curriculum Text Material Discussion: The Absolutely True Diary of a Part-Time Indian. Mr. Zalinski led the discussion of this text material, and after the committee reviewed the book, it will be removed from the text materials list for twenty twenty-four to twenty-five school year. Credit Recovery with Enmentum, Moosh. Students will sign up for online classes. Students will pay through Moosh. Mr. Zalinski led the discussion of credit recovery for high school students for the summer. Students' families will receive a detailed letter that will allow them to sign up and take courses, which they may have failed online during the summer months. Guidance counselors will follow up with students who need to take courses, especially if it may affect their graduation status. Parents and students will sign up and pay for their courses through Moosh. Financial Literacy and Money Skills dot org. Option for students who have trouble fitting financial literacy into their schedules. Possible solution due to two staff reductions in the business department. Mr. Zalinski led the discussion of using this online course for students to meet their financial literacy requirement. This will be a pilot year for certain groups of students by the budget cuts that have resulted in a loss of two business teachers at the high school. Lead U Assembly for Grades Ten and Twelve. Society for the Prevention of Teen Suicide. Mr. Zalinski informed the committee that these assemblies will be viewed by the tenth and twelfth grades this year. They are at no cost to the district, and we will look to expand their use next school year. LTMS Band Chorus Trip to Hershey Park, that already took place, five thirty-one. LTHS WLTS Senior Trip to NBC Studios, that took place, six three, twenty twenty-four. Special Education. Special Olympics, New Jersey Summer Games, six eight and six nine. Jacob Beruschin, two gold medals. Vijay Vigilante, two gold medals. Aiden DeGraw, bronze and gold medals. Brianna Vasquez, fifth and sixth place finishes. Technology. Chromebook Program: Replacement of Two Grade Levels of Chromebooks Over the Summer. Chromebook Collection Taking Place at the Middle School and for High School Seniors. Parts Orders to Maintain Chromebooks in Early July. E S Y and S E A Planning is Underway. Community Relations. Integral Club End-of-Year Party, June seventh, twenty twenty-four, at Gilly Park. Of course, that's it, please. Old Guard of Forked River, Chapter Nineteen Visit on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. And Personnel. June eleventh, twenty twenty-four, Tentative Budget Adoption, which we had. And June twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, Final Adoption. Adoption. LTEA, Nothing to Report, Other, Nothing to Report. Our next meeting is scheduled for August sixth, twenty twenty-four, at two thirty P M. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Armando. Ms. Klaas, let's do Finance, please.
We had two finance meetings this month. The first one was on May twenty-first at four o'clock. It was about an hour and a half. It was myself, Mr. Conady. Uh, Mr. Peters was an alternate for Mr. Armando, Ms. Ornsby, and Dr. Pereira. Uh, we pretty much just talked about the budget for about an hour and a half. That's it. Thursday, June thirteenth, we had another meeting. It was myself, Mr. Armando, Mr. Conady, Dr. Pereira, and Ms. Ornsby. Uh, we talked about health and prescription renewal. We're voting on that tonight. Our health benefits went up twelve percent, and our prescription benefits went up nine percent. Dental, there was no increase. Property and Casual, Casualty Insurance. Uh, Ms. Ornsby led a review on the property and casualty insurance renewal. Um, the quote will be the subject of the resolution on the June Agenda. Chromebook and Desktop Purchase. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the quote of new Chromebooks for desktop. This quote will be subject to resolution on the June Agenda. Next year, we're gonna look into leasing. We'll see if that saves us any money. Capital and Maintenance Reserves. Ms. Ornsby led the discussion on the capital and maintenance reserve account deposits. Uh, these items will be the subject to two resolutions on tonight's agenda. Subscription Busing. So we had, um, a parent come in the last meeting, and he was asking about subscription busing. So it was only two days later, we had our meeting, so we opened the discussion. So we're gonna discuss it again the next finance meeting. Um, we couldn't really get through it, it just wasn't enough time. Um, the June Agenda Review. We spent a lot of time just going over this large agenda. Fiscal Action. Ms. Ornsby led a discussion on the fiscal action. Um, the district was assessed from the administrative review performed by the Department of Agriculture in May twenty twenty-four. Walking Zone, we talked about that. We are gonna expand the walking zone. This was a plan from last year. Um, now that the light is in, um, we're gonna do another little section, and we are gonna add a crossing guard. And I think that's all we had. That's it.
We had no policy meeting this month. Sorry. Yeah, next month we'll have a policy meeting. Okay. Superintendent Comments, please.
Yes. Um, I just, like I mentioned in my letter, I just want to thank our community for all of their support in getting the letters out again to Trenton and to the people who really are in positions to effectuate change. Um, I do want to address a comment very respectfully. My decision to retire was mine and mine alone. I would never take advice from you, Mr. Bidnick. But the thing too is, you know, I'm, I'm reminded of this quote that I love. It's actually hanging in my office. And it's by Theodore Roosevelt, and it says, "It's not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena." Not once, Mr. Bidnick, have you ever gotten in the arena with me. Not once. Have you visited a kindergarten classroom, gone to an awards night, scholarship night? You've never been to a graduation ceremony, to my knowledge. You've never been to a student academic presentation to look at the successes of our students in SAT, and AP, and reading, and math. You've never volunteered at an event when we really needed help? And I just checked my emails. You've sent six since two thousand and nineteen. So, you know, I find it a shame because I really think that if you had come with some suggestions to this board or to me, I mean, at least Mr. Rizzoli, we banter, he gives me suggestions, um, and ideas. You know, it's my understanding you've provided a list, but you've never had that dialogue with me, nor have you ever cared to. Instead, you think that you're more powerful on the other side of that podium, which you've said. And I disagree with you. I think that you would have been more powerful had you had a seat up here with all of us. Um, I'm never gonna change your mind, nor do I care to try. Um, and that's okay. You have your opinion, and you're entitled to it. Um, but there are some misdemeanors. And my decision to retire again, nothing to do with you.
Well, thank you for your comments. Board comments. Mr. Dan Bell.
We'll say it is much easier on that side of the podium. But we've had to do some difficult things, and, uh, I appreciate the board. I just wanna say that really quick. Uh, they don't always agree with me, but they have done a great job trying to help me learn and educate me. And, uh, I appreciate the time each of those spent. I appreciate everybody that's spoken at the podium. And I just hope that we can move forward as a, a district, uh, and have more plans, more ideas. We're always open to them, I can tell you that. Uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Armando?
Uh, yes, first, I'd like to congratulate the Teachers of the Year and the Staff Members of the Month. And, um, Dr. Pereira, I'm gonna personally miss you. I think you, um, you've taught me a lot. And, um, I'm just gonna miss you at these meetings. I'm gonna miss you overall in general, so I wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you.
And yes, I do wanna read something. I wrote something, so I didn't go off on a tangent. So, um, "I want to address the significant concern surrounding raising school taxes two percent to nine point nine percent. That's nearly a five-fold increase. So I urge my fellow board members to reconsider the substantial increase. While our commitment to providing quality education for our children is unwavering, we must also recognize our fiscal responsibility to the community. It's vital to understand why the tax rate has been capped at two percent. The cap was established to protect homeowners from sudden overwhelming financial burdens, maintain economic stability in our community, and encourage fiscal responsibility within the school district. At our last meeting, those who opposed the tax increase were unfairly accused of not caring about the children. Told they should move, they weren't part of the school community, and that it's only money. Such accusations are not only unfair, but also very divisive, disregarding valid concerns of many residents. We must remember that all taxpayers are integral members of our school community, and their voices and contributions deserve to be respected and valued. Passing a nine point nine percent tax increase would pose a heavy financial burden on homeowners and renters. Renters and businesses will face increased rent as landlords pass along additional tax burden. Seniors and those on fixed incomes would be affected facing financial hardships. Many retirees who have been carefully planning their financial, finances would struggle forcing essential cutbacks and even possible relocation. Maintaining a reasonable tax rate helps protect the economic stability of our community and retain the support of residents. The Board of Education has a responsibility to ensure every dollar is spent efficiently and effectively to benefit our students without placing an overwhelming burden on taxpayers and families. The nine point nine percent increase is a one-year Band-Aid, and this Band-Aid places a long-term financial burden for residents who will have to deal with the consequences of higher taxes that just grow higher each year. Again, I urge my fellow board members to reconsider the substantial tax burden. Supporting and caring about our children's educations means advocating for a fiscally responsible approach that supports their needs while providing the financial health of our entire community. And I really would like the board to reconsider maybe moving the meeting a little later on Friday. Food for thought, and I think it's really important. People are working, and taxpayers do wanna be part of this. And they, they don't, they feel like they don't have a voice. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Klaas?
Sure. Um, I wanted to address Nick, but he left, so hopefully he'll, um, watch the tape. But, um, we did go out to Seabreeze Community. I guess he didn't come. But we met, Dr. Pereira and I met with a group of about a hundred and fifty, close to two hundred people when we were doing our letter campaign, um, to get the word out. So, um, thank you to his community, um, you know, unfortunately for him. But he, they really helped us move along with this, um, you know, with this increase, um, with this bill. So, um, I, I would love some invitations to go back. So I don't know if, um, we can get an invitation, if we can go back and speak regularly, maybe once a quarter. Just let them know what's going on in the schools. I think that would be helpful. Um, but we were there. So, you know, in two thousand and eighteen, we were at twenty-one million dollars, um, uh, funded from the state. And now we're down to seven. So when that two percent cap went in, we had twenty-one million dollars. Now we have seven, and we're still at seventy-one million. So just think of everything that's gone up. We have cut so much. You know, I'm supporting this nine point nine because we can't, we can't survive without it. We cut a hundred and thirty teachers already. We cut this year thirty-five teachers. We can't afford to cut another forty to fifty teachers. We can't afford to have forty kids, forty-five kids in a classroom. We can't, our kids will not learn. So our ranking was higher back then. Why? We had more money. We had smaller classrooms. So everything, you know, you take away one thing, another problem happens, and that's what's happening. So yes, it's unfortunate. We are raising, and I, and I do feel for everybody, including myself. But we need to do this to survive. Um, we have paras that are full-time right now. There's twenty-nine, I believe, ish, twenty-nine full-time paras. You know, I, I don't wanna look at them and say, "Hey, you're now part-time, and there goes your benefits." I mean, they're, they're part of our community. You know, we can't get rid of another fifty teachers. They're part of our community too. So, I, you know, I do support the nine point nine. That's, you know, where I stand on that, but, um, we, I do sympathize for everybody, um, in our community as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Armando?
Hey, thanks. Congratulations to all scholarship recipients, as well as our Teachers of the Year, Staff Members of the Year. Well done to everyone. I also want to wish Dr. Pereira all the best. Since joining the board, Dr. Pereira and I have had many conversations on what it takes to be a good board member. Now, she is in fact, a de facto board member. So, I went to her a lot for advice on how the school runs. What did the day-to-day activity look like? What does this mean? What does that mean? Can I say this? Can I do this? Oh, I'm sorry, did I call you on the weekend? My apologies, but I have another question for you. Very receptive to all my questions. And I think because of my interaction with Dr. Pereira, I became a better board member. I don't know how much of an impact that had on the board, but I feel that when I sit at this dais, I'm prepared, I'm well-informed, and I do my job for all the residents in this community. So, thank you. I wish you all the best, and it's been a pleasure. I love sports. I love school spirit. I think that's critical. I don't care where you go to school. Performing arts is crucial. I don't know if it was my first year as a board member when our performing arts, performing arts group did the Mamma Mia. And I was blown away. I was blown away. And I was like, wow, this is amazing. And I hear what you're saying. We're talking about an LT on a jacket. I don't understand what the problem is. If we want school spirit, I don't know. I thought I've seen people walking around with marching band jacks, varsity jackets.
Marching band, but that's considered an athletic.
But I've also seen the mask.
They can get be added, but they can't. Is it okay? No problems.
Yeah, yeah, please.
They can get the stuff for the sleeves, but they're not issuing a letter for that.
Now, is this a state policy or something that?
We're going to talk about it more in policy.
I would really like to just make that happen. I think it's critical. It makes people walking out here feeling pretty good. I'm the recipient, a proud parent of watching my sons and daughters receive letters, and it's a proud moment, not only for them, but for all the members of the family. So, if we can make that happen for our performing arts group, why not? I think it should be done. Sounds like a no-brainer. Mrs. Miller, thank you. You're 100% right. We should have this meeting later in the day. I just looked at the weather. It's only raining on Saturday. And if we want to have this meeting on Friday, we should. I don't want to be here at 6:00 on a Friday night. Not that I have this great, you know, crazy schedule where I'm going to be somewhere, but I'd be all right with sitting here and listening to all the residents of Lacey Township speak about what they like and dislike about the budget. I think it's critical. I think we're in a critical time right now as a district, and I think all residents deserve a voice and not just those in favor. Mrs. Edgeworth, I know you now for a couple of years. And it takes a big person, a God-believing person, to go up in the podium and do what you just did and apologize. I know you. I know that was just heated-in-the-moment stuff. So, thank you for doing that. That's real class. I appreciate that. Apologies are huge. And when you can say it in the public like you just did, that's very cool. So, well done. I'll say it again, man, tax increases. We did not, as a community, make phone calls and send emails to beg for a tax increase. We didn't. I know I didn't. I wanted more money back. Give me some money from Newark. Give me some money from Passaic. Give me some money from there. I didn't want you, I didn't make phone calls to have my taxes raised 9.9%. Now, the good thing about a 9.9% increase is it gives our teachers the security they need to continue feeding their families and taking care of their families. Unfortunately, there's another side of the group that may not be able to afford the increase. And that's disheartening. And we all say it's only this and it's only that. It's not just only this. I think we need to respect both people that this affects. The time for survival, you know, it's over, man. We got to stop talking about, well, we just want to survive. Maybe that's the problem. As a board, all we talk about is survival. We never talk about thriving. All right? Let's thrive. Let's go get corporate sponsorships. Let's go put names on buses. Let's have naming rights. We've got two that I know of who play professional sport, three that I know of who play professional athletics that graduated from this school. Tyrell Smith, Chris Fleming, and Keith Elias. Where are they? Why aren't we bringing them back here to talk to our kids? Those kids who are troubled, who maybe need someone else to talk to, maybe someone that they might have something a little bit more in common with. Let's bring them in to name the field. Let's bring them in to name the court, whatever. But we need to bring the old crew back so the young crew can understand how we got to be this great in everything that we do. I think that got lost somewhere along the way. The tradition that we talk about, well, we don't talk about it enough. There is a tradition here. There's been some amazing graduates here. When I first moved here, I was on the Lacey Township Basketball Association Board, and we gave out scholarships that night. And there was a guy, first time I've seen it in my career, a guy who got a scholarship to the Air Force Academy. It was amazing. I've never seen that. I'm from Queens, you know, took civil service jobs. It was amazing to see that. And it was something that, that wasn't even my kid, and I was proud. Talk about being proud, right? Giving out a varsity letter. I don't get it, you know? So, if we're going to raise taxes, I want my school to look like Ridgwood. You know? I want that kind of, I want that kind of school for 9.9% and more. I want my school to look like the other schools out there that are thriving. I can't keep figuring out, how are we going to put another Band-Aid on this? How are we going to put another Band-Aid on this? How are we going to put another Band-Aid in? And then we're fighting, and we're looking at each other, and we're talking to each other. And at the end of the day, we're all professional. Thank God on this dais, we're all professional. We have the ability to voice our concerns without hurting anybody's feelings. But at the end of the day, we should expect more for 9.9% and not just the opportunity to have the doors open in September. So, my commitment to you guys tonight, and we already started talking about it, thank God Kim was really into it as well, Sharon was very into it as well, started talking about corporate sponsorships and naming rights and bus sponsorships and things like that. And if you have any ideas on how we can drive revenue back to the school, please, if you want to blow up my inbox, please feel free to do so. I'd love to see these ideas because I write them up all the time, and anything we can do to drive revenue back to the school, because we know it's coming. September, we start all over again. I know Sharon's going to have an idea, and it's not going to work out the way we want, and we're going to start scrambling. And we shouldn't be in a position to scramble. I said it last week, and I'll say it again, we're too competent to be incompetent. I stole that line from Mrs. Armando down at the other end of the dais. But that's what we need to do. We need to be proactive. We need to be all in. And the time for going back and forth with each other is over. It's done. Let's get this thing fixed. Let's not worry about it. Let's talk about surplus in a couple of years. You know what I mean? And we're not doing that. We're just talking about how to survive. Let's not do that anymore. Let's talk about how do we bring revenue back to the school? If we can do that, then we have tradition. Everybody will want to come back and have their voices heard in the school. I'm sorry I went off there a little bit. I did have something written down, but other ideas kept creeping into my head. So, I apologize for the long-winded speech, but thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Armando. Just want the public to realize something. Our 20-year average of raising the taxes over 20 years is 3.6%. There were years we did not use that full 2% cap. There were years we gave money back after we took the 2% cap. So, the average over 20 years is, with this increase that we're voting on next Friday at 4:00, because you have to give a one-week notice for the timeframe, some board members to understand that you just can't change it and say we're doing it 4:00, 6:00. It has to be one-week notice. From that point there, we passed our deadline to pass our budget. 3.6%, remember that over 20-year average, that's what we've raised your taxes. And I've only been on the board the last six years. Mr. Armando, you made comments like, all in, and we have to do this, we have to do that. Please do me a favor. Try to best your ability to make all our meetings, all the finance meetings that I've covered for you for, meetings that you've left early on and couldn't stay.
Then have them at a normal time for business people who work, don't have to be, don't have to leave work early.
Have you made that suggestion to the finance chair?
No. No, I didn't.
Maybe if you do that.
And I did miss one. And let's talk about the other people that missed meetings. Are they being publicly recognized?
I'm not talking about them right now. I'm talking about you.
But I want, if you're going to recognize me for missing meetings, I want everybody to recognize Mr. Peters for missing meetings.
Let's recognize now. How many have I missed?
I didn't ask you. But where's he?
Fortunately, he's working right now.
So, he can miss because he's working. I can't.
Right.
Right. That's what you're saying.
No, I'm talking about.
So, it's a double standard.
No.
It's your crew and then the outsiders.
Did you answer your question?
No. You're not answering any questions.
I'm trying to, and you interrupted me.
I want to know why no one else is being publicly recognized for missing meetings.
Because nobody else got up here and said that they're all in tonight.
Say it again.
Nobody else got up and said they're all in tonight 100%.
I said we're all in.
Said you were all in.
And have I not been all in?
I don't know. I've covered numerous meetings for you.
Numerous, namely.
As a sub, as a sub, but she just did, two of them.
Let me ask you something. You're a board president. You're supposed to be the face of this board.
I am.
What did you do Friday afternoon?
Friday afternoon.
When you came to Senior Day?
I went there because.
Had a slice of pizza and left.
No, that's not what happened.
Yeah, I was there. I was cleaning while you were watching.
You're right. And I was told, I'm not going to get in this.
No, why not? You brought it up, Mr. Peters.
Okay, I will get in front of it. I got there at 12:30, so I was told I was going to Dunk Tank, which I volunteered my time.
No, we were there at 11:00, so you weren't there.
Are you going to finish? Let me finish. I was told, I'll show you the email, to be there at 12:30 in the Dunk Tank. I'll show you the email.
I know it. I know all about it.
So, I got there at 12:17. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Yeah, we'll talk about it later.
No, no. I want you to recognize everybody else that missed meetings, you coward.
So, anyway, that being said, that is, excuse me?
You're a coward. How dare you recognize me and not everyone else that missed the meeting here? You're pointing it out. You know why you're pointing it out? Because you know what's happening in July? I'm running again.
Are you done?
How dare you?
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
But not with you.
Is that a threat?
No, it's not a threat.
Okay.
Such a foul ball. Move on.
I'm ready, I'm in, Mr. Peters.
Thank you so much.
Jesus Christ.
Are you done? Thank you. Anyway, that being said, 3.6% was our average over 20 years. So, yes, I'm in for raising the increase, keep the class eyes down, and doing the best we can to get the best education we possibly can. All right, that's it. Let's move on to next. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Page number two, meeting minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armando?
Yes.
Mr. Armando? Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page two listed bills, final listed bills, two and three. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armando?
Yes.
Mr. Armando?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Well, I'm standing on 211210.
Thank you.
Page two, transfers, and S-1701, A through 5, please. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armando?
Yes.
Mr. Armando?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Page 3 through 12, Finance, 6 through 29. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armando?
Yes.
Mr. Armando?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Pages 12 through 14, Technology, 30 through 39. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second. Peters. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armando?
Yes.
Mr. Armando?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Pages 14 through 16, Transportation, Items 40 to 43. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armando?
Yes.
Mr. Armando?
Yes.
Pages 16 through 18, Annual Adoptions, 44 to 51. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second.
Got that? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armando?
Yes.
Mr. Armando?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Pages 18, 18 through 21, Purchasing, 52 to 61. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make the second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armando?
Yes.
Mr. Armando?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Pages 21 to 30, Professional Services, 62 to 67. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armando?
Yes.
Mr. Armando?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Next page, page two, Page 30 and 31, Facilities and Other, Items 78 to 85. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion.
I'll second it, Peters. Good. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Armando?
Yes.
Mr. Armando?
Yes.